Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 7th, 2019 business meeting. Mr. Schmidt, our new county administrator, would you please call the role?
Yes, Chair, our staff support today is Stephen Madcor, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, Chair Bernard, and Commissioner Fisher are out of the office today, so Chair Humberston, you'll be serving as Chair of the meeting. With that, roll call, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Humberston.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, first up on our agenda today is Citizens Communication, and we have two folks today, Mr. Bob Reese and Mr. Les Poole. Would you please come forward to the microphones? And, Mr. Reese, if you'd identify yourself and where you live, we'd appreciate it.
Good morning, Chair Humberston and members of the Commission. My name is Bob Reese. I live at 130 Ogden Drive in Oregon City.
Okay, and you're up.
Okay, just thought I'd take advantage of introducing myself to the Commission. Again, my name is Bob Reese. I'm a former Executive Director for the Association Northwest Steelheaders and a founding Board Member for the Northwest Guides and Anglers Association. I am a 23-year professional fishing guide in Oregon, mostly Northwest Oregon, and a sixth-generation Oregonian as well. I just came to introduce myself again for some of the work we're doing. I had a great meeting with Commissioner Humberston this morning, talking about forestry issues and also fisheries issues, how they're related, and some of the work that we're doing on behalf of the Steelheaders. In particular, I just wanted to introduce myself in that, and I'll provide some additional materials in the near future, about our work in trying to recover fisheries, wild fish in particular, spring chinook and winter steelhead in the Upper Willamette Basin, as well as recovering sport fisheries that we've historically lost here in Clackamas County. I took just a minute to look up what the value of sport fishing is in the 2008 study by Dean Runyon and Associates that was delivered to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Again, these numbers are over a decade old, but on an annual basis, sport fishing in Clackamas County is a $7.158 million a year industry that takes place here. I'm sure under today's dollars, that's expanded, but as you may or may not know, we have lost some historic opportunity due to issues related to predation on salmonids in the Oregon City area, as well as depressed runs that have come back to the Clackamas River and Willamette River in recent history. For example, on the Clackamas River, I used to be a Creel Checker there, back in the mid-'80s, out of college. Historically, we saw between 3,000 and 4,000 hatchery spring chinook harvested out of the Clackamas River. Last year, there were seven hatchery fish taken out of the Clackamas River. So it is a severely depressed run that we hope to reinvigorate through different processes that we're working with the Department of Fish and Wildlife on. In particular, we're working to restore wild salmon and steelhead in the upper basin by engaging with our federal legislators on getting the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to implement conservation measures that have not been implemented from the 2008 biological opinion, Willamette River biological opinion, in particular, fish passage at some of those dams up there, that will allow access to additional 400 miles of high-quality habitat that could dramatically improve the wild runs of fish in the basin. Coupled with that, our aim is to, once wild fish are recovered, take a small percentage of this wild fish and use them, integrate them into hatchery programs to reinvigorate hatchery-produced fish at a higher rate, therefore supplementing the $7.158 million that Clackamas County benefits from sport fishing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Les Poole.
Hey, thanks for what you folks are doing there. I live in Gladstone, and of course, we're right on where the Clackamas meets the Willamette, so fishing is a big part, and recreation's a big part of our community, and even a bigger part of the county. I wanted to reflect just real briefly on Dennis Richardson. You know, what a neat guy. What a transparent, engaging person. I posted on Facebook yesterday that I remember the last time I had a long conversation with him, and I didn't, never had that many. You didn't need to have that many long or short conversations to know who you were dealing with. And it was in Salem. It was in a cold parking lot, 33 or 4 degrees out, you know, the smoke or whatever, the vapors coming off your words. And he was there for 30, 35 minutes with me, talking, and he left about 10:15 at night for the three-and-a-half-hour drive home to Central Point in the middle of winter. Dennis made that time for me, and Dennis would have made that time for any of us. So we've lost somebody really special, and a unifying voice in Salem, and a fiscal conservative. I don't care about your opinions on all the issues. This guy was careful with money, and that's what we need more of. Used half my time already, and I could talk about Dennis for probably another 10 minutes if you let me, but I'll move on. The vehicle registration fee that you approved, I filed a referendum on that, which would, if enough signatures were gathered within 90 days, that would put it on the ballot for a vote. And while disappointed that it wasn't put out for a vote, the bigger disappointment has played out in the last few weeks in the testimony and in things I'm seeing in the media, and that's the lack of awareness. I use the word awareness, not necessarily involvement, but awareness of the public, of what's going on, of whether or not this is justified. So in reflection, I have decided to withdraw, and I have informed the county that I've withdrawn the referendum on that fee, and I'll be happy to explain that to you in the future. But there's something else coming. It certainly doesn't mean the objection to it is over, and I'll be making a request that in the IGA, one of the key components would be a requirement for a public vote on any increases in that fee. I think that would be a real, real key component, and had that been included in the conversation, you may have not gotten the resistance you're getting. So I'll conclude by saying I do have a measure coming that may influence, if it's successful, some of how we deal with the transportation dollars, and I'm not at liberty to say much here, except that that measure will send a message, not just to the county, but really to Metro, about how our money's being spent and being prioritized. We are not going to be able to survive with tolling, a vehicle registration fee that can be increased with little question, with a carbon tax, and the fact that the cost of living is going through the roof right now. So it's all tied together. I'm going to make sure that everyone knows what the next measure is going to be. That'll come out in probably three weeks, and I appreciate your time as always.
Just wanted you to know, two things in the whole process that went down with the VRF. One was, there was original thought, but a much higher one, and the one that was chosen was chosen because it would move the needle, but wasn't going to be too burdensome to people. So we recognize the importance of that. I can tell you from my perspective, I personally went to eight different community meetings and personally presented the information to people, and owned the decision, and found quite a few people reluctantly, what I call reluctantly accepting, the necessity of it. I do appreciate your input on this, so thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Just clarification, so did I hear you correctly? You're not going to pursue the petition for gathering signatures to refer the VRF referendum?
Correct.
But alternatively, you are anticipating coming with another measure?
An initiative.
Okay.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, that's news to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Bob, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, and we have a relatively short agenda today, and it is the consent agenda, so I'd ask the Clerk to please read the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval to request funds from the Health Resources and Services Administration 19-080 grant for health center programs, approval of a subrecipient agreement amendment number three with the Friends of the Canby Adult Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents, approval of a construction contract with Gresham Roofing for the re-roof project at the Estacada Community Center, under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a contract with Kittleson and Associates for the Damascus Transportation System Plan Update, under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, under Human Resources, approval of the Deferred Compensation 457 Retirement Plan document changes to include other acceptable documentation, under Technology Services, approval of a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Cascade Access for additional connections, under the Development Agency, approval of a commercial lease with Milney Morrisonry?
Masonry.
Masonry, thank you. Also, approval of a commercial lease with W.E. Givenz Contracting, approval of a second amendment to the Owner Participation Development Agreement with Hoodland Fire District, underwater Environment Services, approval of a service connection mortgage in the North Clackamas Service Area with Water Environment Services, and approval of an agreement for release of covenant running with the land. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Do the Commissioners wish to remove or pull any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Schrader to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. County Commissioner Update, or excuse me, County Administrator update.
Thank you, Commissioners. Several good news items I'd like to share with you this week of good things happening in county government. Last week, Clackamas County Sustainability and Solid Waste co-sponsored the Second Annual Regional Green Business Gathering in Portland. That event brings green-minded businesses together to share ideas and break down silos. More than 100 businesses took part, with 13 Clackamas County-based businesses being present, including Dave's Killer Bread, Providence, Milwaukee, and Xerox. The county businesses represents about 2,500 employees, so thank you to our Sustainability Division who helped coordinate that event. Next, County Clerk Sherry Hall shared that one of her employees, Michael Newgard, piloted one of the helicopters yesterday in the flyover event at Secretary of State Dennis Richardson's memorial service. Michael is a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, and the Oregon National Guard asked Michael to pilot one of those helicopters, because Dennis Richardson himself was a helicopter pilot in Vietnam. So we recognize Michael of our staff for that honor and his service to our nation. Finally, I want to relay that Clackamas County has been awarded additional funding for homelessness, homeless services. All of the county's 2018 Continuum of Care applications to the Department of Housing and Urban Development were accepted and funded. That program provides funding to quickly rehouse homeless individuals and families while minimizing the trauma caused. This is a result of outreach, relationship building, and targeted support by our community development staff and social services staff, all under the Department of Health, Housing, and Human Services here at the county. In total, the county will receive 281,000 more dollars in funding than we received last year, which is a 12% increase, for a total of $2.7 million worth of funds to Clackamas County to help our most vulnerable community members. So thank you to our H3A staff for that fantastic work. That is my update today, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. And now, Commissioner Communications, Martha.
Well, I've had a really busy week. I have been in Washington, D.C., and not only on behalf of our county, and Commissioner Savis was there as well, so we were both covering issues for Clackamas County, but also as President of the Association of Oregon Counties. And I'm happy to say we were able to meet in person with most of our delegation, with Congressman Schrader, was his deputy director. Evidently, he had been called out, but the good news is that we got our message directly either through our delegation electeds, or their deputy directors of what's going on, not only for Clackamas County, but for the rest of the counties as well. We talked about forestry issues. We talked about fire issues. We talked about the housing crisis that the state is facing. We talked about Curry County, for example, where they're having a serious problem, where a major, one of their major portions of 101 is sliding at least two feet, if not more, a day into, what was it?
An hour.
An hour, excuse me. It's quite a serious situation, and had a good conversation with, I would say, Representative DeFazio about that. There appears to be an impetus to have a larger national infrastructure package. What we've been told is that the House would like to have something available or pushed out by May, but there seems to be some uncertainty in the Senate, I think, about how quickly that's going to move forward. We get mixed signals with that. We also had an opportunity to meet with our lobbyist, Hal Hamstra, and talk about the Willamette Heritage Project, as well as our project that we're working with the Governor and the Governor's Appointed Commission and the Corps of Engineers on the Willamette Falls locks. We've got some news with that. I have found out there have been a few hitches with the designation of a national heritage area, so I've already asked staff to come and meet with me, so I could brief them on what I've been hearing about, what that may be about. On a personal level, I'm an ambassador for first-time commissioners who attend the National Association of Counties, which means we get to breakfast, we chat with them, and we give them pointers on how to get involved, because it's a large organization. There's a lot going on all the time, not only with leadership discussions, but with educational symposium and forums. And I had an opportunity to be a panelist on the Large Urban County Caucus, talking about what Clackamas County is doing for houselessness and homelessness, and the other two folks were from LA County. So that was fascinating for me, because, you know, even though we are considered an urban county as well as a rural county, when you talk about the populations that they're dealing with, and the millions for even a single district, it's a little bit, little bit on a different scale, which is somewhat daunting, but I did talk about reauthorizing home, and that is a program from HUD that gives us dollars for rapid rehousing. Community development block grants are a big thing, and I really described what we're going through here in Clackamas County, and the fact that one of our main initiatives is actually increasing capacity and making sure we have the there there, so we can house people. They were very interested in our veterans shelter. They see that as a major innovation that's getting some national recognition, so I'm hopeful we can apply and get an award for that innovative work for that. I also am on the NACO Board of Directors, which is kind of like being on AOC, only bigger, and that, of course, is where we take a look at the resolutions that we're going to continue to support nationally, and again, a very interesting process there. I also wanted to mention that last week I had an opportunity to meet with Portland General Electric, talking to them about their Oregon cap and trade policy priorities, and their plan is by 2040 to see a 70% energy mix that will be carbon-free. They are working very diligently to meet these goals. They are essentially committed to affordable electricity, and they are committed in playing a central role in decarbonizing the energy economy, and they are working very hard as they move forward with this initiative to make sure that ratepayers are not dinged unnecessarily. They are really working on this in ways to make sure that there are no unfair rate increases as well. So we're watching this very closely at the legislative level. It was also a topic discussion with our delegation, and it is going to move forward, so your Association of Oregon Counties as a group is also working to influence those outcomes. In particular, we want to see the formula for the split of dollars. I think it's 80/20, something around 40, or 80/40/20, or 60/40/20, you know, I'm kind of jet-lagged right now, whatever. But in any case, there is a specific formula that allocates money to counties and cities, and we don't want, as they move forward with the carbon initiative, we don't want to see that formula changed. And we are also, I also had an opportunity to talk to the Governor directly and mention that, we have to be equitable, and to really remember that in many of our rural counties, any increase, immediate, large increase in gas costs, well, really, really puts them at a disadvantage. They have larger areas that they have to take care of, they often have to, you know, travel longer distances, and they don't have the same level of transit and other modalities of getting from A to B in some of our rural areas. So as they move forward with that conversation, and I do have an opportunity to talk to Representative Power, she is one of our legislative folks, and I am grateful that she's in charge of that, because she is very diligent, very smart, very fair, and has an excellent reputation of listening to everyone as she works through difficult issues. So with that, let me go to the Word of the Week. Okay. Palpable, adjective, touchable, or able to be perceived. That which is palpable is tangible or undeniably present. The librarian could feel the palpable excitement of the children when they saw the new collection of books at the library. And okay, let's go to Arts and Culture in the county. Canby Library Music in the Stacks presents Castle Town, Saturday, March 9th, 2:30 to 3:30 at the Canby Library. Free performance of fiery Americeltic fiddle tunes mixed with engaging original songs. It's almost impossible not to dance to their tunes. Telecom Chamber Orchestra presents music by Tchaikovsky, Liadov, Dvorak, Villa Lobos, and Bizet, under guest conductor Ken Selden, Saturday, March 9th, 7:30, at the Rex Putnam High School Auditorium, and the Chamber Orchestra invite you to join them for their third concert of their 2018-2019 season, and the fourth in our conductor search series, and it's $5 to $15. And for more information about any event, talk to the Arts Alliance at clackamasartsalliance.org. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Yes, well, I too attended Washington, D.C. with Commissioner Schrader, and was able to, I think, one of the meetings that I want to just, that Martha touched on, with the topic that she touched on with veterans and our project, I sat in on the Veterans' Steering Committee presentation, and there was a panelist group there from the state of California of what they had done in their particular county, and I realized, and one of our staffers in the back of the room, Emily Klepper, was there, I had consulted her while this was happening and shared some of the information. I'm happy to, you know, to share that with you. I've got it in my materials. But it was a similar project, but I realized that our project was a little bit, I think, a contender. If you couple in the 24-unit housing development that's taking place here in Oregon City with the transitional shelter, and the fact that we've already transitioned so many veterans already into permanent housing, that, I think that would be a model that we could, you know, we could share with the rest of our partners around the country. The NACO is a national forum, and I was honored, this particular time, to not only represent Clackamas County, but in the capacity of now, one of the vice chairs of the National Association of Counties, I was a panelist in a pretty full room at the Longworth House, and it was fascinating, three county commissioners from around the country, and three congressmen, Congressman Bluenauer being one of those. So it was a, it was a pretty full, there was standing room only during that conversation, but to be able to have that national forum, to put Clackamas County's issues at that national level, I thought was pretty significant, and that in and of itself made the trip worthy. But I got a lot of feedback afterwards and questions about what we're doing, and that about Clackamas County. So it was, it was an honor to be there. I thought it was a really good event, and I think our AOC, our State Association of County Members, Commissioners that attended from around the state, did a fantastic job. I was so impressed with the camaraderie, the skills, that they made their points, their professionalism. It was a good group of people that went there, so it was a long trip, you know, a lot of walking, my feet are sore from walking, all the walking through there, but I thought it was a good trip, so. But I did want to say that the message, most important thing about all of this, is the message that we were presenting there on this panel was really about reauthorization of the FAST Act, reauthorization, basically, the surface funding for transportation, surface transportation in the country, and the need for, and really, that's why we were there, is making the case for the needs of investment in infrastructure, and that is where you need to, we need to address that. The capital needs, the maintenance needs, we heard it all there. We do need more funding, and we need to have, I think, a roadmap, a pathway that actually gets there, and made the case that federal funding helps leverage state dollars, state dollars help leverage federal funding. It's really part of the momentum. But when we look at the needs out there, we need a path to get there. We need a path locally, we need a path at the federal-state levels, and I am concerned, whether it's national or it's local, that we make sure that we endear the trust of the citizens, and that's, the federal government needs to do that, state government needs to do that. We need to endear the trust, because we're not going to get there the way we're currently poised. And shortly after this meeting, I'll be heading to Salem to testify on a transportation bill for Interstate 205, to get funding for I-205, and be making that case as well. So I, it's nice, I think, sometimes, when we go on these trips, or we take a particular, even locally, we go to Salem to lobby on something that's local in nature or state in nature, but we have to have a complete path for these problems, and I guess I, when I hear sometimes that there are folks out there that feel that there's already enough money to do all those things, well, clearly, there's not. There's a gap, and there's a huge gap, and that gap is the issue that we need to have, again, a means to get to point A to point B on our maintenance, and also on some of our key infrastructure. So with that, I, you know, I think my concerns on this topic over the last eight or nine years is the roadmap to get there, and we need the trust of the citizens to get there, both here locally, across the state, and across this country.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Before I get started, I received a text from our Chair. Before I get started, I received a text from our chair who had been listening to Les Poole's suggestion about any increases in the VRF and indicated that he would support that as part of any IGA. I think we should take that under serious consideration. I think we made the right decision the other day based on the necessities that we face currently. But going forward, I don't think that's a bad idea at all. I also appreciated the fact that one of our citizens specifically gave us an idea about having a citizens committee to work with our transportation department on selecting projects and evaluating projects. And to the best of my knowledge, we're going to go forward that way. I've had a couple of people actually contact me and ask to have their names forwarded to be appointed to that committee. We'll see how that, you know, how the selection process goes. But there is, there are people out there that are interested in participating and making sure that the money's spent and spent wisely and in Clackamas County where it absolutely should be spent. I had the pleasure of attending quite a number of events this last week. One of the most moving ones, what's called the Chain of Survival Event, where our fire department and ambulance folks and 911 folks and the citizens who are the first responders oftentimes to heart attacks were all honored for their service. And what they had done in the last year or less was save nine lives. And it was a very moving ceremony to see the people who survived there thanking the people who helped them survive. Commissioner Bernard and I attended a Summit Ski Stakeholders Meeting up at Government Camp. There's some interest on the part of the ski folks up there to expand their facilities. And they're working with the community to figure out how they're going to do this and deal with the transportation issues that they have up there. Attended Homeless Solutions Meeting. And Commissioner Savis is absolutely correct on the needs that we have, the funds that we have don't meet the needs. And I believe there's a combination of reasons for that, one of which, of course, is the revenue sharing we used to get with the federal government is significantly less than it used to be. Another, in my opinion, and it's shared by others I've talked to, is the wages that are paid in a low-income economy are part of the problem also. People with low wages pay no taxes. That reduces our income. So all of those things end up feeding into our homeless solutions problem. I met with Dr. David Plotkin from Clackamas Community College, who's very interested in how the Clackamas Community College can work with our CLT initiatives to help provide training for people in the various and sundry trades and technical fields that are going to be involved in cross-laminated timber. CNC operators, for instance, would be something that they could do very easily. But they're very interested in helping out on that. So we've suggested that they contact the unions, of course, that are doing some of the training already, and some other suggestions that we made for them to move forward. Met with the Chair of the Fair Board today. They are almost done with their master plan. And they are already doing their outreach for the audit that we have requested that they do. So they are absolutely moving forward with the requests that this board has made of them to jump into the 21st century and get themselves on a solid financial footing. Enjoyed the Clackamas Service Center dinner the other night on Sunday, just them saying thank you to all the people in the community that have helped them help those that are homeless and hungry. Also enjoyed a dinner at the Hoodland Women's Club. They're doing their fundraisers for the services that they provide up there on the mountain. And they're still working on their park initiative. Hopefully, they will be able to get that on the ballot. And as was pointed out, I met with the gentleman, Bob Reese, regarding the fisheries. It's been interesting to me that I thought, in terms of the county job, that you're talking about making sure the roads are paved and the police are on the street, and the crooks are off the street, and the parks are open, and the social services are taken care of. And never did I expect that I would also be talking about the harvesting of trees and the protection of fish and some of the other things. But that is a big part of what makes this job really, really interesting. And on that note, I remembered, I have it in front of me, we will go to the dogs. This is Maggie. She is a three-year-old black, gray, and white Shih Tzu who is looking for a new home. She would do best in a home where kids are at least six years old and older. If you're looking for a sweet, adorable companion to share your life with, please go and meet her today. For more information about Maggie or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at (503) 655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And go see Maggie. And on that note, if there is no other business, we stand adjourned.